The Cascade Township Planning Commission Order for Monday, August 8th, 2022. Moving on to Article One, recording the attendance. We have a few that are absent, Member Rowland and Member Rissy, who are both excused. Moving to Article Two, the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, everybody who has joined us from the public. We also potentially have people who are calling in on Zoom. Going to Article Three, approving the current agenda of your motion.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Member Ringo, supported by Deardrops. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, hearing none, measure passes. Moving on to Article Four, does anybody on the Planning Commission have a wish to disclose a conflict of interest? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Article Five, it looks like we've got two meetings that we need to approve, is that right, Brian?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll start with the July 11th, I could hear a motion to approve the meetings minutes from July 11th.
So moved, support.
Moved by Member Ringo, supported by Member Rapid, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we'll move on, Article Six, approving the minutes from July 18th, 2022 meeting.
I just have one comment, and maybe it's a question for Brian. On Article Seven, when we talked about the approval of the fence, just wondering if it does need to say temporary fence versus just approving the fence. I think the timeframe implies that it's temporary, but I just didn't know, I know we've discussed the word temporary, that it is not a permanent structure, so I don't know whether that matters or not, or if it's the timeframe implies that it's temporary.
Yeah, I would say I think the timeframe, since it's included in that motion there, I think that should cover it.
Okay.
Any other? Do you like to make a motion then?
I can make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 18th minute meeting.
Which may be by Member Corset, and supported by...
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Be opposed, hearing done, move on.
I do have to abstain on that one, I was not present for the 18th.
Okay.
Same.
Do we have a forum for that?
We have a forum of five.
Yep. Who abstained?
Abstained by Member Rapid.
Okay.
Close though.
Sure.
Needed you to. All right. Article Seven, I see we have a number of people, this is an opportunity where visitors that wish to speak, it would ask, we do have a public hearing for the case number 22-3722, see Mr. Postma is present. If you're here to speak about that, I would ask that you wait until we get to that public hearing, but if you're here to speak about anything else, feel free to come forward and ask, state your name and your address for the record. Same will apply when we have the public hearing for the other matter. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? Okay, I suspect everybody is here for the case that we have next. Let's move right onto that case number eight, or Article Eight, case number 22-3722, Postma.
Hey, we have an application from the Postmas, they're seeking a Type One special use permit for a 30 by 40 accessory building. They're seeking the permit because anything over 832 square feet would require so. The 1,200 square foot building is proposed to be in their side yard with another access drive to it. The height to the midpoint of the roof is 12 foot six inches. The intended use for the building is to be purely for storage of some high-end vehicles. The applicant made it clear they're not proposing to do any sort of like washing or mechanical work in the accessory building, or any type of commercial use, and then I just wanted to note that that's good, because that's not approved for an accessory building to run any sort of business. The required setbacks are met with the building plan as is. It's 50 feet roughly from the side yard and the rear yard, and it doesn't sit closer to the front than the home does. With less than three acres in property size, they would only be permitted this one accessory building. The look of the building is proposed to be like the image you see on the right, kind of going in the style of residential homes in the area, and the applicant noted that they would be making it look similar to the home. The surrounding area doesn't have a lot of accessory buildings, but the proposed size isn't uncommon in the township. We did include that accessory building inventory for you guys to look at, kind of comparable applications that have been approved. The factors for approval, just briefly mentioned for our residents that are here with us, so they know what we've considered, was that proposed location. These are the factors that the Planning Commission considers in their approval, so the use of the building, this proposed location and style, how I mentioned it would look residential. The property is an acre, so as I mentioned, anything under three acres, they could only have the one accessory building. Do we see any impact of light in circulation on any adjoining properties? No. And the view also, we didn't note that that would have any negative impact to adjacent properties. That about covers it, the conditions that I recommend with approval is that the building is not used for a living space or to run a business, and that any outdoor lighting would meet our regulations.
Does anybody have any questions, staff?
We have one question, and this is purely because I just don't, I don't know what the answer is, so.
Yeah.
Does the access drive need any kind of approval from your department, from Kent County Road Commission?
They would have to look into a permit with the Kent County Road Commission likely for any new driveway entrance, but if it's not a new address, I believe.
When it's on a private street, then it doesn't need township approval or county approval, it's when it's on a public street is when those permits are needed.
Okay, so nothing in this case?
Yeah, correct.
I have the same question in regards, is, were there, I don't know if that's like bylaws for the private driver, are there any other rules not from the county or township that would have to apply?
So currently, when we looked into it, the private street doesn't have any sort of agreement in place, but there is kind of neighbors getting together right now, looking into kind of a maintenance agreement for the private street in the future.
But that does not exist today, correct?
Correct.
The only other question I had on the site visit, there's a culvert off the road, and I'm assuming the drive that will juts around that to the front of the garage to avoid the culvert?
I...
So there may be no movement of that culvert, or?
I was not notified that that would be the case, but I would refer to the applicant to answer that question.
Is there a, is the pitch of the roof similar to what's here? Trying to, I'm a history major, so 12 foot six in the middle, is it a, is it a residential pitch like this, or is it a flatter? More like a storage unit type building, I'm sure John can answer that as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the applicant could probably speak to the building itself better, we were given a couple renderings that are similar to this with the pointed roof, so that would be my prediction, that's why it was submitted to me.
Your understanding is the pitch would be the same as this?
Yes, that's what was submitted, yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions, staff, we may call you back. Thank you, I, as the applicant present, seeing him, might step forward in your name if you'd like to.
Sure.
All right.
Good evening, I'm John Postma, this is my son David. We've been collecting cars for some time, and David decided to buy a home in Cascade close by our home, this garage is actually my garage, it's right around the corner. So we are planning to build a similar garage. When I met with Brian, we were hoping to get a little larger garage, a 30 by 60, and Brian said that would be a real push. So we are here tonight to ask for a 30 by 40. As far as the pitch, that's a typical garage, a residential garage, but we're willing to make it a 512 instead of a 612, this is a 612 pitch. If it would, if the neighbors would like a little lower profile, we can do that. We won't have any lights on the front of the garage, just to be concerning with the neighbors. We'll have recessed lights under the eaves, just coming down, but no lights on the front of the garage. So David and I, he kind of finds the cars, I buy them, but we've always wanted to, we're happy as parents to have him in Cascade, so three of the four of our kids now live in Cascade. So we're kind of looking forward to doing this together. We plan to spend a lot of money on the house, it's an older house that needs a lot of work. We've started there, but right now, we've allowed the sellers to stay there until their new house is finished, which could take some time, but we're working with them as to when, you know, their new house will be ready to move out. We do plan to re-side the house to match the garage. It has a new roof on it, we plan to spend a lot of money on landscaping. David works for Hill Brands, which is a business I recently sold for the Hill Brands family. So he knows a lot about landscaping, and we plan to landscape the carriage house and the house. We're gonna put in a concrete driveway, not a asphalt driveway. There is a culvert there, and we'll make certain that that stays in place. We may have to reinforce the culvert. The private road needs some work, and I've offered to help in putting together a private drive agreement for the neighbors, but that's another issue, but the culvert there may need some reinforcement if we're gonna put a cement driveway on it. But we plan, this is David's forever house, we plan to spend a lot of money on the house, inside, outside, and to, I think, help the neighbors, there is a carriage house across the street, I didn't know if you knew that. I met with Brad Etheridge, but Brad has a carriage house across the street from this home, he lives at 5520 Ranger Hills. And so that was our plan.
Anybody have any questions for John? I have one.
Yes, sir.
And it's Mar, I just want to get the records there on this. In your application, you use the word museum, which could have, I think it's the implication that the cars are of that quality, but I want to confirm that it will not be a museum in the sense that people will come in as a business.
No, sir. We've, we've had cars at the Gilmore, we, we buy them at Barrett-Jackson, they're very nice cars, but and also, there will definitely not be any work, any mechanical, any washing of vehicles. We're gonna have beautiful floors that you could eat off of, but it's strictly for storage and taking out on the weekend for a Sunday drive, or whatever.
I suspected that was the case, but.
Yes, yes, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just one quick one to follow up on Chris. It's gonna be a very nice interior, it sounds like, do you plan to have people come in and go through and see the cars while located on your property?
Not really, I mean, I have some friends that like to see, I have another garage in Ada, where most of the cars are. These will be cars that'll be under wraps and just investment type cars, so we have resto mods and then late model high, high horsepower cars that they're trying to get rid of and going to EV, so these are kind of cars that won't be driven much, but just be in storage. It'll have heat and air conditioning. The building will have heat and air conditioning, just to keep the humidity levels at a constant temperature.
So the neighbors would have a reasonable expectation that there won't be a lot of people coming, just to see these cars?
No, we'll have security on the building, and I mean, I have some friends, Kaz, who just got approved. Dustin Carpenter is building his garage, he's across from Doug and Maria DeVoss, he is building this garage. So it'll be of the caliber that, you know, it should be.
Yes.
How many cars will you store in there?
Well, a 30 by 60, you can get nine cars, a 30 by 40, you can only get six cars. So if you do 30 by 30, you can get a car and a half, I mean, so we really, really need the 30 by 40, but six cars only, we'd love to go higher, but we understand the height restrictions. If we had a higher building, we could put a hoist in and put two cars, one on top of each other, but here, we would have a maximum of only six cars.
Okay. Any questions? So we may call you back.
Okay, sir.
Public hearing, or if members of public have questions.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I would, your motion to move to public.
I would move to open public hearing.
Motion may be by Member Rapid, supported by Member Corset, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, we'll go to public hearing, so this is an opportunity, if you'd like to come forward, if you have questions of us, even of the applicant, that would be the appropriate time. I would ask that you state your name and address. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Phil, yeah, come on forward if you could. Step forward and speak into the microphone, so we record this for the minutes.
So my name is Mary Kylama, I'm at 5519 Ranger Hills, so I'm directly to the east of this residence. So my concerns are partly the driveway, because I think that's going to change the look of the neighborhood, and also the size of the building, which is almost as large as the house. I just feel like it's gonna be a big change that I'm not really happy about. Like, you know, I don't have any problem with someone having the car collection, but I guess I don't want it in my neighborhood. No one else to say. And I don't want to make any enemies, but I'm just not thrilled about it. So.
My name is Armin Sikama, I live at 5525 Ranger Hill, which is two lots to the east. Like Mary, I have some concerns. One of them is how close it sits to the neighbor to the east, or to the neighbor to the west, Magnifico's. They're gonna, if there's any air conditioning units running, or heating units, I'm sure they'll be able to hear them. Lighting has already been addressed, that's good, because it's an issue when you live out in the country, when you're trying to sleep at night, when you have bright lights coming in your bedroom. My main concern is the driveway, it's gonna be a whole nother hardscape put into the neighborhood. As you proceed to the east on Ranger Hill, it's all downhill. I'm at the bottom of the hill, along with the Romances. My front yard and front drive is probably the lowest spot for the entire neighborhood. And I've had flooding issues ever since the Villas Veda went in. They put a 24-inch culvert under Hall Street, I don't know if you're aware of that. And that empties into my backyard. So some ranges were made to put in French drains, but when we get the torrential rains that we're getting more and more of nowadays, the two and three inch trains in a short period of time, I still have side yard flooding, sometimes up to a foot deep. So my concern is, when you have a pitch drift like that, a concrete drive is what's called for in the plans, that that's all additional hardscapes to the neighborhood, and that all runs downhill. I'm not against change, I know there's, change is inevitable, just like death and taxes. I'm not against people using their property the way they want to. My only request would be that the building just meets minimum code. A small building for a, that size lot, for an acre lot. And that the driveway be as narrow as possible. Because along with change comes, whenever you have change, you have results, you have things that happen because of it. And a lot of times, they're unforeseen, just like when the Villas Veda, they went to Ada Township, I never heard about that meeting. I went to the second meeting when they added their Phase Two, and spoke against putting in Phase Two, because their 100-year storm drain ponds have been overflowing more than it's been about 10 years. And we've had overflows. And it hasn't been 100 years, that's what I was told, wow, that was 100-year storm. No, we'll get the, we'll get the ponds taken care, I know you're not Ada Township, but I'm just saying, everything is related. Everything feeds one thing to another. All that water from the Villas Veda, which has tremendous amounts of hardscape, flows directly underneath Hall Street and into Cascade Township. Now, you explained to me how that ever was allowed, ever. The first time it flooded was at December of 2008, we had a heat wave in December, and my family was home for the holidays, and we looked outside, and the whole side yard was a river. Believe it or not. We had no idea what was going on, so I ran to the west to try to find out where the water was coming from, and here's this huge culvert, a 24-inch culvert with a grate in front of it, that had been placed there the summer before. So my only point is, everything has consequences, so I would ask that the building be kept as small as possible, and the driveway. I have no problem with change and people using their land the way they want to. And I think that's my five minutes, so I'll go sit down, thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak?
Hi. I'm at a distinct disadvantage, because I've heard very little of what's been said, so unfortunately. I'm Julie Romance, and I live at the end of the street, and I also was extremely impacted by what Armin was saying hugely, we had a river in our yard. I do know that it has made a huge difference in our yard, but I'm not sure that an outbuilding or a garage that is done tastefully with possible drainage taken into account would affect our drainage on the street. I also am aware that it backs up to Magnifico's, but looking where they have it placed, I think it's the least obtrusive. It's sort of tucked in there, and there's very large pine trees behind it, and hopefully it will not affect them very much. I do know that, having lived on the street for way too many years, 50 some, something like that, okay, way too many. We've been a very nice community that has lovely neighbors, and I don't want to upset anybody. I think that if the building was built within the county specs of what was allowed, I'm not sure that unless we took a tape measure to it, that we would know that it was slightly larger. I, I, I hope and I trust that John and his son, by the way, it's very nice to meet you, I haven't met you yet, will do everything tastefully, and that we can continue to have a street that has lovely neighbors, because I love them all. I guess that's what I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? I didn't address the, feel free.
So yeah, we're always very concerned about the drainage, and we plan to have gutters on the garage with a probably an 18-inch gravel kind of a border around the garage, and that will be drain tiled, so any water off the garage will stay on the site. As far as any water coming down, again, we've already talked to the cement contractor, but we, we plan to grade the drive a little bit so that the water is to the left instead of to the right, but we're very cognizant of keeping the water on our site. And then as far as the air conditioner, it's an interior unit, so it's impossible to hear.
I suspect you're insulating it.
Yes, very well, very well, and, and so there would be no noise whatsoever of a compressor or anything like that. Thank you. John, do you have any questions?
Have you, have you considered French drains, or maybe even a pervious surface for the driveway?
I mean, we like the cement, because it just holds up, the asphalt kind of just disintegrates, so it costs more, but we definitely plan to do some landscaping and try to hide it in, on the plan. It shows kind of a little bit of a bend, I don't just want a straight drive coming off the garage, so a little bit of a bend, and then with some landscaping. And if, if French drains are needed, we'll do that. We did start some tree removal, just because there were a lot of dead trees that we cleaned up, and so we're just trying to start things, but in a careful way.
You mentioned that the water would go to the left, instead of the right, you mean to the west?
Yes, sir, to the west, I'm sorry, as I'm facing the garage to the left, to the west. Okay, thank you.
No, I just have questions for staff.
Anybody else have, now that Mr. Postma's come forward, does anybody else have any other questions? Your motion closed.
Support.
Motion may be by Member Corset, supported by Member Engel to close public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none? How do I show the screen, I know you have a question as well, I thought it might be helpful to show them the spreadsheet that you prepared. So every time, if you didn't get the packet, every time we look at an accessory building, we ask Brian and team to put together a spreadsheet of all the ones that, that we have approved in the past, and then we get some averages, and all right, is that my screen? So we, we get this, and it gives us data to look at ahead of this meeting, as we do drive bys, right? And then at the bottom, what it gives us is, you know, the averages for the township, and then all the way down to the PED, right, in this situation, the PD is that I suspect most of you folks are in. And, you know, the, the average size of the accessory, of an accessory building that in your PD is 1,700 square feet, now, yeah, the acreage is three, which is greater, so I just, I wanted you to see that we don't take these decisions lightly, and we really do try to look at that data. And it's certainly available on the website in the packet, so if you go to documentation or reference on their website, you can see it. But there is data there, so how do we turn this off?
Done.
While you're doing that, I request that you answer a question for staff.
My question for staff?
My question for staff is um, maybe it was in here, I just overlooked it, but there was reference to the accessory building across the street. Which I did not really focus any of my attention when I went out there across the street, but do you know what size the accessory building is across the street and does that have a separate driveway?
When I was reviewing, I didn't see that one, so I don't have the data on it.
I know, I don't see it in the ones listed, so it's not the list.
Yeah, probably old or maybe exactly eight hundred or eight hundred thirty-two, so they don't require.
And that's what I was wondering is if we, anybody knew the size of the accessory building across the street and whether it had its own separate driveway as well.
We need them back.
What if, I didn't, I did not focus that way.
I looked and couldn't see it online.
Something, Mr. Post.
Just covered by tree cover. At least from the area.
You were, you were on, you just.
I was looking at the aerial maps, let me go to the public one.
Oh, to measure.
What's that?
Is he going to measure on parcel viewer? I just couldn't see it on there.
How to uh,
On our assessing information, it looks like it's five hundred seventy-six square feet.
Okay.
It says a detached building is that size.
Have a common driveway with the garage attached to the house.
Thank you.
Any, any thoughts or comments? Would anybody like to uh, take a bracket that's?
Sure.
I'll look to the left. I keep looking at Timmy all along down there.
I don't know if I'll get much support, but I am going to make a motion to approve case number two, two, three, seven, two, two, post month. For the accessory building with staff's recommendations.
Okay, your motion, your support.
Support.
For member Ringo, motion made by number Corstitch. All those in favor say aye.
Okay, aye. I just want to clarify, just one clarification, because the the lighting specifically was mentioned to be down lighting, not front lighting. Do we want to put that in?
Can we amend, to it?
It's usually, I just got to find this, I'm sorry, I got to find the recommendations. Cause I thought it addressed lighting.
Yeah, specifically.
It's, if you look at number five, it says any outdoor lighting will have, meet our standard requiring it to be shielded and downcast.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
No amendment to the motion, uh, as is, uh, we're, of course, it's made the motion, member Ringo, uh, supported it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Thank you very much. Turn the item. Uh, any old business that we'd like to discuss? Not, I think it's the only subcommittee these days, so. Here, um, I think you go Wednesday, right?
Correct.
Okay, so big night for us on Wednesday. The warm, farming farm posting recommendations will be there. Is anybody joining you?
I think I'm good. I talked briefly to Brian before this meeting just to confirm it was still on the agenda.
Yeah.
Um, and just to ask when it would be appropriate for me to speak and he told me just to speak during public hearing. Or public comment. So that's the only questions I really had.
We should probably have you speak right at the time where.
That's what, that's what.
I think it should be public comments.
Right.
Well, it's, it's scheduled for a public hearing, so during the hearing for that item.
Did Grace give us a presentation on the agenda? Is it on as a presentation?
What's that?
Is it on as a presentation?
No, it's on as an agenda item for a public hearing and then approval.
As a trustee, you can request that.
Yeah.
I'll be ready whenever.
I really don't want to talk with a timer. That's the only thing I can.
No, I don't want her on time.
I'll try to segment it so that it's.
More than fifteen minutes.
Oh, no, it was, could probably be five. Won't be long.
Mr. Roland, Mr. Moxley had a.
I will be there though for questions if there are any questions, because I think there may be.
Will there be a binder?
No, sorry.
You set the standard too high.
Okay, excellent. Um, um, I don't, any other old business before I move on to any other business? All right, we're gonna pretend any other business.
I'd just like to say that I'm a little um, concerned about the water issue that he just brought up. That's not the in Ada Township that's dumping.
Yeah, so I don't know if, like, I don't I I don't even know what to say about that other than I'm, I'm.
Where does that fall, Brian, these week? I mean, would another township approved action causes harm to our residents? Maybe that's a good way to put it, but.
Impacts or residents.
Yeah, I don't know for sure without looking into it more. And I'm not sure when that was approved either, if they, you know, sent us a notice or asked for comments or anything or something like that.
Yeah, he's, he's approximately right. It was probably ten to eleven years ago, maybe eleven to twelve years ago. It's been a while.
Yeah.
I'd say.
That's a big project to go underneath Hall Street though, with a culvert.
And I'm just, it's concerning to me that that happened in the first place. And then I'm also wondering, was there anything done to alleviate the water sitting on his property?
I think he said, didn't he say they put in a French drain? To help with the issue, but it still gets bad sometimes.
Yeah, so did it help or is there still water sitting on his property if we get a thaw in December or a big rainstorm in the summer?
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead. If you, do you have a?
When there's a heavy rain, there's one back there on both the domes, who are at the very end of the street and who are just these.
Yeah.
So I know that they did the French drain, so not going to the basement.
It is weird that they drained that across, under Hall Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, like that's a lot.
One touch to another.
I know, I know, especially when there's a lot of, that development's big and it's not super dense. There's areas within there that I'm surprised they didn't put it.
I, would you mind digging a little bit?
Yeah, we can see a little bit or see if any of the road commission recalls if there's something else supposed to be happening. I'm imagining some stormwater infrastructure along the road, I would think, but maybe it gets overwhelmed in large storm events or something like that, but we can try to look into it a little bit.
Thank you.
There's a lift which directly have got maybe that's one of those flash lights, right?
Yeah. Who? That might be.
It's no.
The plot thickens.
Right.
All the floor lights.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Um, I have some other uh, business. Uh, I serve um, the P F O advisory. Um, some, some good stuff moving in that direction in case you've talked to different residents. We will start construction September twelfth and start ripping up the streets. They're going to start connecting residents that already have access in that neighborhood um, to city water that we've already provided to those plumbers. They can start doing that. Um, so they'll put the first, there's two phases, the phase one. That, because we ran, uh, we have supply shortages. Um, so they're going to get the first phase of phase one done this fall. They're going to go as far as they have supplies and then um, the second phase will happen early next year of phase one. And then I, I don't know if phase two will also start next year. The good news is it's fully funded.
Federally.
It's funded, we have some state grants and we have federal stuff that um, Congressman Meyer uh, put in for us. So you know, that that's the good news. Um, and it's progressing forward. So if you hear anything. Um, at this time, the um, township is not requiring uh, residents to cap their wells if they want to use it for irrigation if they do hook on uh, in that neighborhood. So.
Is there a debate about that though, about whether that should be done?
Um, there, there definitely is, and I suspect more will come because this, this is an ongoing thing. I think that there will be some talk um, with the airport that may affect that. But there's definitely a conversation and there are two very strong sides, as you can imagine. Uh, to put mildly to, to that. So, but it it definitely is uh, progressing forward.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
Great to hear. And residents in those areas are required to hook up to the city water?
At this time, it's being made available to them. I don't think that there is a hard requirement at this time.
Okay.
But there's no cost to hook on.
And so even to hit, even the plumber to get from the road to the hall? That's amazing.
And we, uh, and I give Ben a lot of credit for this. He, he accommodated even for directional drilling, right? If you know anything about hooking in the city water, right? Most direct path is to the front of the house and where do people usually finish their basis? Right? Um, and so we accommodated for, uh, Ben accommodated for directional drilling, this team. And so, um, but yeah, there's no cost. I think they'll even remove the water softness.
Wow.
Yeah.
So it is optional. I think I had read somebody was concerned that they were being forced.
At this, at this time, it's optional. I think maybe where Joe was going is that at some point it may be a requirement because you don't want to break up bad water.
Right.
So, um, but at this moment.
And how about the, is I think it's a quarterly bill? Is that, is that a responsibility of the homeowner or?
It is.
Okay.
It is. So, um, I know, and I can't speak for any homeowners here. I know homeowners in Plainfield is an example where this, something similar happened. Some of them took action against the responsible party that caused the, the issue for that. This time, the township is providing through the, the state grants and federal monies uh, the, to hook up and all the costs associated with that.
That's great.
Uh, it is, and I do, uh, I mean, member nor, or trustee Northwood have a large piece to do with a lot of this too. So thank you for pushing it through.
I pushed.
Yes, you did. You ensured that the residents in the neighborhood had uh, water provided and uh, you know, things often behind the scenes in a lot of this stuff and uh, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other business? Yes.
Property at sixty-four eighty Cascade Road. They continue to have a lot of vehicles parked in the front yard. Right now, it's not as bad as it has been, but a lot of times there's, there's uh, trucks and trailers parked out near the road. And uh, it looks like it is a commercial establishment. Somebody is working out of this house doing vehicle repairs of some sort. And uh, I would like to uh, uh, I know this was an issue when I first came on the planning commission. We asked about it and uh, nothing has happened. Apparently, there's been some discussions with the property renter about this, but nothing has happened. And I'd like to uh, ask that uh, staff talk to the, the people that are renting this property. I know it's not the homeowner that is there. They live somewhere else. Uh, ask them what the plan is and what uh, so I. I, I need to know what options we have here.
Yeah, he's been on my radar for the, actually since I started. They've talked with Alan about it, but I just spoke with the property owner probably two weeks ago now. And he said he's listing the house for sale in the next couple of weeks and he doesn't think the renter will be able to afford it, so it should kind of take care of itself. So I'm, I am aware of it and I'm monitoring it. I've sent him a couple of letters. Um, I never hear back from the renter, but I have spoken with the property owner. So I know it's a slow process, but if it gets up for sale, that should take care of it pretty quick. And he talked um, directly with his renter saying you need to clean up the yard um, and get this all out. And we've he has a little.
Yeah, there's grass in the front yard now.
Okay, well, that's, that's a start.
For years, it was constantly being like yeah, pushed the dirt.
Yeah, and if you look in the backyard too, there's a bunch of stuff. So hopefully, once it's sold, it'll be taken care of. I know that might be still a few months yet before it's gone, but
Okay, well, thank you.
I do know. Okay, good.
Thanks, Patty.
Yeah.
Any other business? Do we have a meeting next week?
Did you have something first?
I did have a question. We have a meeting scheduled for next week, I believe.
Next week?
Next week.
Yep, a planning commission meeting?
Correct.
I'm, yeah, ninety percent sure. We'll have a site planned to review. I'm waiting on one thing from them. They should be given to me tomorrow, but I'll let you guys know soon. And then I was going to mention that we had uh, Madison and I had B S and A training last week to get that planning and zoning module up as part of the building department. So that has been all completed. And so now we're able to add cases into the B S and A software to track documents going forward. So as we has time, we'll do some backlogging of previous cases and add those in, but going forward, we'll be making sure we're getting the routine of adding everything into B S and A then and um, working that out. So.
Great, will that?
That's great.
Will that be public like uh, the parcel finder is?
I'll have to double check what I think some aspects of will be on B S and A online, similar to somehow some of the assessing and billing information is to.
Enforcement will be on there too now.
Oh, awesome.
Good, good.
Really?
So uh, Brian and I continue to look for education opportunities. Our goal is to bring you some in September. All online and uh, and most of the in-person stuff happens in the spring. Uh, but we're trying to identify some, some online opportunities. And again, that's one of my goals, uh, that we, we start to build some subject matter experts on this.
Thank you.
Corner con, all right, any other business?
We have one minor question about our email. I tried to change my password yesterday because I can only get it on my phone. I can't get it on my computer. And when I go on my computer, it asks for my login and of course I can't remember what the password is, um, but it wouldn't let me change it.
I have the password at home still for all of ours, because it's all the same. So if you want it, just call me. Yeah.
Brian had asked me to call and I had meant to call support. It doesn't seem like we should have to call support to enter password. I just haven't had time to do that yet. But it is on my list too. That's. It's chaps.
Okay.
I think it's my role, but I'm happy to do that. And I just had to do that today. I had to look up the email to login on my work computer.
Yeah.
Same problem.
O W A does work, just running it out. I've been able to get to it.
You can't change your password through O W A.
No.
If I remember, if I could remember my password or, or our password.
Yeah.
Be an issue, but um, I mean.
The library, we can just tell it.
Be that big of an issue, but yeah.
Okay.
I stumbled across this paper the other day, so I do have it somewhere.
Any other business? Okay, um, let's move on to article eleven. Uh, acknowledge any visitors uh, who wish to speak. Yes, come forward. Yeah, just name and address one more time. They, they take minutes on it.
Yep, Mary Kylama, five, five, one, nine Ranger Hills. So I just had a question. You mentioned something about lighting restrictions. Can you enlighten me? What are the, what are the lighting restrictions like for residences? Are we supposed to have down lighting? Can you have super bright lights that light up the whole neighborhood?
So it's, that's a complicated question. Um, it depends on what was approved. Uh, and I think Brian could probably speak to you afterwards about the code if that's, if that's all right.
Sure.
Uh, but it's a more involved in what we might be able to, and so what you see us do with these accessory buildings is provide, you'll see staff in every one of them. Provide, these are our lighting requirements and this is what you need to follow. We take it pretty seriously because it can be problematic, especially in accessory buildings because they're usually at the edge of a property and they brighten up the neighbor's life and that's not generally what we want.
So it would be different at our residence than on an accessory building?
On the home, I suspect it would be. Again, Brian would be able to give you more details.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody out on Zoom? Awesome. All right, Bob, anybody like to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Support. All right, member, Eric made the motion, member happened. Support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. See you next week.